It is an open meeting. If you would like to speak, you need to be on the sign up sheet to do so. Um, I'm not, we don't open the floor up to comments during the meeting. We've kind of done that a little bit and I would prefer not to do that. So if you have something to say, be sure and be on your sheet. I would, at this time, maintain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I so do.
Second? I'll second.
Ron.
Hi.
Fire.
Hi.
To all.
Hi.
All those fire plates, five zero.
Okay, additions to the agenda. I, on number ten and eleven, council member items, I've asked in the past to have specific council member items put on there. On this agenda, it says that we'd like to discuss city business or city. This is all city business. I would appreciate specific agenda items. So we'll move number ten and eleven to the next council meeting, provided there are specific agenda items. One little housekeeping thing, the centennial, is that the centennial planner, that's a good, we don't type trees anymore. I would like to add Skip Allen and Clayton Grimmon, Grimmon to that committee and Skip will be the chairman. So sort of make that on the record. Public comments. Carolyn Williams.
I'll put this in a few minutes and I will stand here so I don't have to back to anybody and get everybody in the room. I had a little story that I shared with, about a junk car in front yard, that's what we liked about it. I heard a psychologist speaking the other day, parents dealing with difficulty. In the middle of this conversation, these words came out, they just kind of helped me from getting scared. Inspire change rather than require change. Inspire change rather than require change. Inspire change causes people to change inside and set their own volition and that change becomes permanent. Required change is caused by a stimulus outside that person and it causes anger, envy, and shame. So then I got to thinking, well, who inspires change? And I thought about a nation, especially around nine eleven and everything that's going on here. If you go back to Abe Lincoln, great leader, inspired great change. Martin Luther King, great leader, inspired great change. He didn't make anybody change. He made people want to change. John F Kennedy, you all know his name, a great leader. So I came to the conclusion that good leaders inspire change. So then I wondered what requires change? Our legislators pass laws requiring us to drive the speed limits, but we all know that sometime in our lives, what? Will we follow the law? No problem. So laws, laws, even though they're passed for our safety and everybody's safety, they don't always change people. And laws like that will cause some people to be resentful. Gun laws right now will cause a whole lot of people to become angry and resentful. We've seen that. And that trickles down to our people. So anyway, now we have leaders who inspire change and we have laws that require change. Then I got to thinking, well, who else requires change? I'm, every boss that I've worked for required me to do what he wanted done the way he or she wanted it done, when he or she wanted it done. So bosses require change. And as soon as I didn't have that boss, we got a new boss, guess what? I went back to doing it my own way until I got told I had to change again. It didn't stick. Requiring change is a failing proposition. So when you work with people in your city wanting them to change, and let me tell you, it's difficult for sixty and seventy and eighty year old people to change. It's difficult. There is something that makes us feel secure the older you get. It makes us feel secure to see our junk out there in our backyard. And I don't know how to explain it, it just is. If you go out and you see something moved in your backyard, it gives you a little twinge. Somebody's been there. So when you're dealing with older folks, asking them to do things, even though you've passed an order, I would ask that you use a little inspiration in how you do it rather than just require it. Okay? That's my reminder. Number two item, I want to thank Doug Brown, he has been a support to the members of this committee. Anybody could be able to calculate rid of stuff, he has provided that being supportive of it. He saved me at a minimum of a hundred and thirty dollars this weekend by picking up old fires that were mine. They were left there by the chickens. My thanks, Joe, do you call? I know all I know, you're not here. But he comes and picks up all the metal off my place. We need him, I need him, I'm not through yet. Like I say, that is not my stuff. But I'm working on it every year. The city comes by this spring and they got a lot of old junk to carry out, right? They know. So I want to thank the other people in the city who have provided those services to me, they also make saving money. But I want to talk about this. When we don't know where we're going, any old road will lead. Y'all have heard that before, right? When we don't know where we're going, any old road will lead. Went to the city office, I asked Jessica, how many people have moved out this year? She counted, five. Huh, families. Okay. How many have moved in? Five. How many businesses? We're down, we're on a deep pond. Most of the people in Stafford would like to see Stafford grow. But when you're on any old road, you're not going to get where you wanted to. So I would like to suggest that another committee, call it town planning committee, be established to develop a ten year growth plan for Stafford. A plan to represent all areas of Stafford, Stafford, individual citizens, the business sector, and some councilmen. It should all be on that committee. They should develop a ten year plan and that plan should have specific goals and objectives under those goals to reach that goal. And it should have a timeline, a date to reach that goal. And this should all be geared toward growth. That will give you a destination, ten years down the road, and it will give you a way to get there without wandering around, trying this and trying that, and maybe this will work and make that work. I asked if there was such a thing as a town plan to be planned? I was told they never heard or hear of. So I would like to see that happen. The energy we use in trying to change it can be directed to something much more meaningful than what is going on right now. And if you get as many citizens to talk, if you're carrying out that plan, goodness gracious, they are on that plan. And everybody is moving forward, everybody. The rest of the staff will take care of themselves. Thank you.
Thank you, Carolyn. Coach Sears.
Well, I had something to say, but it's gone a bit of years.
Arlen.
I'd like to thank Carolyn for, for inspiration or kind words. Every once in a while, we need a lot of that. We have a situation at hand, I understand, with a lot of plants catching on fire that just happened to be about a week after I visited with Jessica at the city office to find out that what we have is for, is a contingency fund, a contingency plan, a contingency anything for a catastrophic problem. And that could be from the light plant catching on fire, through our sewer system not working, the water wells being down, or a massive ice storm all over town, or a tornado in our backyard. And she assured me that out of the funding that the city of Stafford has, the power plant has a contingency fund. I didn't, didn't ask her, she didn't express what that amounted to, but she assured me out of all the departments in the city of Stafford, that is the number one area where we have a contingency money, contingency plan. A week later, the thing catches on fire. Luckily, I think the city has some insurance besides the contingency money. And surely, and doubtless, believe that will be used for that purpose. I don't know where we're at right now, if the power company, if we're buying power from falls off the line, assuming that maybe we can generate some, let's just the other power plant that we have, maybe we can't generate anything right now until we get it back up and running in full capacity. I don't know what the timeline is or anything else, but that's an important issue to the city, more so than junk cars, tall grass, crap in your lawn, and everything else. And those are the type of issues that two and a half months ago, I came and asked you, people that's on the council in America, if the main focus that we should be working on in Stafford was something other than junk cars, tall grass, weeds, and what have you. And at that time, that was the only focus that we were on. We're supposed to be in a moratorium till the end of this month. The court dates that we have for court been changed to November the first instead of September the ninth or the twentieth or whatever they were previously. At that time, we have opportunity to either go for it, or we have the opportunity to take and extend a moratorium. But if we extend a moratorium, I don't think it's a good idea. Whereas they extend a moratorium and with newspapers like the St. John News, that's printing items in there that says a council member caught trespassing, there's a, there's a pretty good, on the front page, a pretty good section there, and in the front of the back page, there's even more. That is not a good image for us to put for, for the people here in Stafford, much less people in the outline areas. I'm wondering that if in your code of conduct, that there's not some form of formal reprimand to keep that from ever happening again, as well as presenting some type of a reprimand for the person that trespassed in the first place. Now, if I was guilty of trespassing on somebody's property, Doug Brown or somebody from his law enforcement bureau would probably have me in handcuffs and I'd be stuck. And I'd have to defend myself somehow or another. But it appears that if it's somebody of prominence, that that's not an issue. I don't understand that. I don't think that the President of the United States is above the law. But yet, we have people here that are sitting in council and in two weeks' time, we don't have anybody in charge of anything. I don't understand that. But that's an issue we got there. But the power plant is an issue that affects us all. And, and, and it could be in a real bad way if we never had that power plant in. We could probably do without the power plant entirely, but if we did, we're going to be at a stranglehold of whatever electrical company that we buy utility electricity from. And the, the only reason to really have that power plant is when they go offline, we can come back on about six or 10 minutes.
Right.
If everything's working fine. If it doesn't work fine, then we got another problem. And we have had some twenty minute, thirty minute problem. Nothing real serious. When other cities are out of electricity for periods of time, we're right back up, pretty good.
There were several times during the summer that...
That we were down thirteen minutes, right back up.
Ten minutes that we were down and some of the other communities were down for several hours.
Yeah, that's right. And that could happen. The other, the other aspect that happened to the power plant is, as long as we own that power plant, we're not at a hell of a stranglehold by the utility companies that they can overcharge us for our, our product they're selling us. So that's a, it's kind of like an insurance, it's money in the bank.
A power plant is a huge bargaining chip.
Sure is.
When we go to the table to bargain with Midwest and...
Now, I know years passed when Curly Geller was in charge of, of everything, we, we generated electricity in the summer months, almost all summer long. And the reason for that was, it was cost effective at that time to generate electricity when everybody's running their air conditioning and using the, using the power. And the city could buy natural gas at a cheaper rate in the summer months because people were not heating their homes anymore. So we start on diesel, convert the natural gas, and we'd run on natural gas. And the city got a pretty good chunk of change from the customers here in town. We don't do that anymore. I don't know the answer why we don't, but the main thing of it is, I think we have the opportunity to explore that avenue a little bit more than what we're doing.
Yeah, I agree.
And that's something that we should look at.
Right. And, and we don't, Matt will get into that just a little bit later. We have, it's insured, of course.
Sure.
And we have good insurance. We're kind of in the process of, there's several insurance companies involved. Some of them have been here to look at it, some of them haven't, so it's, it's going to be a little bit longer before we know all the details.
Sure. And then you need to know what dangers are with the rest of the motors and generators and everything else.
We did find out, Matt had a company come out last week and everything checked out okay, if I remember right.
Yeah, I had number two generator checked and they're checked out good, so we can't fire up the blowers online after.
But...
It's going to be a little bit of a process here for those...
I'm sure it will be, yeah. But anyhow, that's another avenue that we need to explore, to see if it is, somehow or another, it would be more cost effective for us to take and generate through the summer months. And if we need backup through the summer months, instead of us being a backup for them, they can be the backup for us. And a lot of people...
It's not cost prohibitive to fire up a generator. We put the pencil to it and we can't hit it right for what we're back for.
Okay, if it's not cost effective, it's not cost effective. But there ought to be other contingency plans, other than just the power plant catching on fire, and us have a contingency plan for that. One of the contingency plans is, we are setting in Stafford, Kansas, right in the middle of tornado alley, and we have not got a public shelter big enough to put everybody in if we needed to put somebody in. Right now, Greensburg has built a shelter big enough to put everybody that live there now in that shelter. When FEMA came in, they got a bunch of box containers that you see on the railroad, and they, they put them in one place in the south, in the town, because they didn't want to have another tornado while they're trying to rebuild their town and no place for anybody to go. So anybody that's moved into the FEMA trailers, they use these box containers in the inn and left space in between them, and they mount dirt over the top of them. If you go to Greensburg now and you look at that area where those FEMA trailers are, there's no FEMA trailer. The streets are blacktop and they got, they didn't have curb getting, but they're, they're blacktop and they have fire station and everything else. But the containers are set in there and they took the earth away from them and everything. And the guy that owns that property, he owns the containers. Those containers could be probably bought for ten cents, ten cents on the dollar from what the heck they originally cost in Greensburg. It would be an opportunity now for somebody to investigate that avenue and see if we can't pay, buy those containers, we've already got empty doors converted in and everything. And we can put those same containers, not all of them, we don't think we need all of them, but we can put those same containers here in Stafford. They're easy to load on a semi and have them trucked over here, we just need to find a place to put them. So when we have a major problem at where we think we all need to be in, something safe, it'd be a whole lot better to have a container above the ground with dirt mounted over the top of it, be able to crawl in there, and it wouldn't be a good location that you don't even have. You know, so there's, there's another issue that we could be looking at, that you people could focus on and do some good about. You know, that's just one of many things. At the last council meeting, if I'm correct, there was a gentleman that lives here from, I believe, California, that was on that agenda, I don't remember all his name, but he expressed that he had looked around the area of towns like St. John and maybe Elmwood, different places, and those towns seem to be cleaner than what Stafford was. Well, I, I got to say that in his point of view, that might have been so, but he doesn't pay any property taxes here. He doesn't own the house to live there. And for him to come here and tell us what we already know, that we need a good cleanup, nobody is ever saying that Stafford doesn't need a damn big cleanup to pop the bottom, and express his views when he doesn't pay taxes. And he lives in one of the councilperson's houses and rents from her and, and is running Stafford now, he's running knee down. You know, he's running everybody that's lived here all their life down. And I tell you what, when people come here from someplace else, if they don't have their roof there, and they start running my town down, worse than all there is, good, bad, or indifferent, Stafford is my home. I'm working on trying to make it a better place, not for me, not only for me, but for other people. And if we have people that come here with attitude that Stafford is their state here, they're got the wrong idea of the first kind of place. They should have never left California or wherever the hell else they were at. They should have stayed there and went someplace else. But, but...
We're, I understand what you're saying, Arlen, but...
Well, I just don't like it. It's negative.
I don't like a lot of things that's going on either.
Yes.
We're, we're working hard at trying to get past this and...
And, and I'm hoping we can get past it.
I, I think we can. But I, I need to, I need to move on.
Okay, no problem.
Thank you. Robin Sanders.
I just wanted to say, thank you Dennis, Joe, Bob, Matt, for what happened on Thursday at the power plant that caught on fire. I want to thank the fire department, I want to thank the police department, and everybody that showed up, it could have been a lot worse. Joe, I want to thank you for taking those x-ray. And Jessica, I want to say thank you to you because you have to deal with the insurance and what goes on. I know exactly what that entails. And I also want to thank the citizens of Stafford who are cleaning up your yards and doing everything else that you have been doing. It's very appreciative and that's all I'm saying. So thank you, guys.
Department head reports. Matt.
You know, last week and a half, I've had a slurrage seal crew in town, putting down slurrage seal on the streets. They should be finished up tomorrow and be out of here. We put down about a hundred and thirty thousand dollars worth of slurrage this year. Next year, we hope to finish up the rest of town. I get slurrage over one block of brick and a cobbie of some and a couple of others. But we need to do something with brick and we can't afford it. When the city can go about the bricklaying, it's not possible. So hopefully the slurrage will work on address, at least look at the option, and using slurrage over the brick.
And as you all know, we had a fire coming. We had a very major fire. We lost our number one motor generator. Extensive damage to a building. It doesn't look it from the outside, y'all come inside. I've got a crew out now, spirally cleaning out of Wichita, doing major cleanup on the building. I was in contact with Jim Strong, Strong Construction, and he sent out an engineer today to check my seamer rafters, my metal roofing, and my power plant. And there's some pretty extensive structural damage, they'll be out tomorrow, measure up and see what we can do about that. And I had Seaman's Corporation come out and check the rest of the generation and I was concerned about the number two motor to do so close to the number one motor that wanted to blow it, but I was afraid to fire it until we had it checked out, but I got it off there on the number two motor. So if the electric does go out in city of Stafford, we can fire it and check it. The only problem we would have was if it would happen on a hundred and seven degree day, and we had to fire a generation, we haven't dug up, we haven't dug up in the motor's lap to carry the whole city of Stafford. So that would be the only now. I ended up looking into our insurance and see if they had a clause in there where they can bring in a generator to replace the number one until we can decide what we're going to do with it. Or we got two insurance carriers on the power plant, we got the EMC, and they carry insurance on the building contents, and they're, everybody wants it to stand out already. Markford Boiler Insurance is the one that carries the insurance on the generator and motor. And that kind of getting the, driving around with them, I finally got ahold of a lady today on the east coast, and she said she would put the wheels in motion and with them, plenty of them aside, a few calls from the adjusters, and they will be out looking at her motor. But I have a feeling it's going to be a total loss. As a testament, as a strictly a testament to the damages, I think we're probably looking at excess of over a million dollars in damages. But our insurance hopefully will cover the majority of that. While we have the chance, we're going to look at upgrading generations. We've got some pretty cost efficient generators out there now, our product to deal earlier about why we don't run in the summer, although it's not cost effective with the generation we're running. We're running old diesel, back of that's old diesel engines. And they use a lot of fuel. It costs about, and really, since I got my last fuel, I haven't really put a pencil to it, but it's going to run around a hundred and thirty to a hundred and fifty dollars a megawatt for the least electricity in the city of Stafford. I get a daily price sheet from Midwest Energy, people have been wondering about the bills. Mine too. I get a daily price sheet from Midwest Energy of what energy's going to cost me per hour that day. And it's from midnight to midnight. And then on them hundred and seven degree days, I was getting hit with ninety seven dollar power. Today it was thirty seven. So when people drive around their bills, that's, you know, we, we have to pay that price to Midwest whatever they want, and we can't fudge on that. But that's, that's the fluctuation of the bills. It's what, I'll show anybody who wants to see a daily price sheet, what we have to pay. That being said...
I just want to make my resignation. As of October the sixteenth, I will no longer be employed for the city of Stafford. I do not like you, Joe Fire, I do not like you, Kim Hoffman, I do not expect you, I will not work for you. I told you two or three days ago that I was tired, all the name calling, sneaking around, that I was tired and I wanted to stop. I gave a stop and I'm done. You, I've worked almost fifteen years for the city, and I've really enjoyed my job for the last six months, and I cannot stand you up and working. I don't like what you're trying to do to the town, I don't like the direction the town's going, and it's basically because you did.
going, and it's basically because you did. I've got, since I took this job, I've got over nine hundred hours of comp, that I've ever been around for. I've got two hundred hours of sick leave, and over four hundred hours of vacation. I'm not an abusive. I've been called a stupid son of a bitch, Mr. Byer.
I wasn't on the city council then, that was three years ago.
Your wife was, she's standing right beside you.
That was three or four years ago.
I don't matter. I've been called pathetic, I've been called incompetent.
When you, when a line is fixed and you go cut a line in two, now what do you call that?
When the power was out at your son's place, we was instructed to cut the power until he could fix the line.
That's how you cut the power, is cut the line while you pull the meter?
Because it's four foot off the ground, Joe.
The meter's four foot off the ground?
Yes, and we would have had a hot box four foot off the ground. Did it inconvenience you that much to come down and ask us to put the power back up, everybody else does?
Well, you asked the day before that, to put the power back up. Well, you did somebody.
Well, you sure didn't ask me, but...
I'm not going to argue with you.
Well, I'm not going to argue with you either.
Okay, be quiet.
I'm telling you the facts. You called, you called me a hug of Byers, you called the siege, basically, and I heard that one day, these people out here directly asking you questions, that had voted you into this office, and you ignored it. And you say I won't answer your questions?
Tell Doug, Doug, he won't answer my questions, he want him to talk to me.
There's only one question you ever asked me I didn't answer, Joe.
And you didn't have a right for that.
Only one. If you people want me out of here before October the fifteenth, you're going to have to fire me, and I'm done with the city. I appreciate the people, I do appreciate the city of Stafford. Thank you.
Matt, I don't know what you're talking about. When I got elected to this position, I came and talked to you, and asked you why you were upset that I got elected. Did I or did I not? I came and talked to you, and I went and talked to Doug Renner.
And I told you I didn't have any problems with you getting elected, as long as it was positive, it stood negative.
What has been negative?
Well, for one thing, I was asked, I've been the city manager, city superintendent for five years. A year and a half ago, I was asked to take over the city manager. I didn't want the job, but I told them I would take it over. But it was unofficial. In March of this year, I was officially made city manager. I was doing my job fine then, there was no problems. Two months later, and Dennis Bronson asked me, he says, as long as there ain't a big fat raising, did I ask for any money?
No.
June, me and Mr. Brown's evaluation, this is not about money, but I asked for, me and Mr. Brown's evaluation. And you and Joe, both as priests, we don't do our jobs. You don't ever want my job then.
No, we did not ever say that.
Yes, you did.
When I asked for, and I want this to be part of the record, I asked, why when we were asking you things, why were we not getting the information?
Wanting to make any information?
Well, there's a lot of things that have not been brought forward, and I don't think tonight is the place to go there, because there's a lot of things that we had to go, I went to other places and found other information out here. I would think as you being over the office, there are a lot of things that we would have been told by you, or...
Did the, did the council ask you to go to other places, like to the orders?
No.
Okay, that, that, you're in violation. You are a council member here, you are a private citizen at private meeting.
I went to the, to see Vicki Dryden, and that is, is, she showed me...
About city finances.
Right. Did you tell us how far behind we were, or where we were at? I'm serious, Matt. Don't you think me as a new council member, that I should have been told that we were that far behind on our bookkeeping?
Did you ask Jessica?
I didn't know. I didn't know.
She could have been asked instead of going to an office.
Well, as her being the clerk and her getting a report...
But you should have done it at a council meeting, it shouldn't have been outside of a council meeting, that's part of the problem. You can't go outside of the council meeting and do that. You can ask that person to come to the meeting and give you the information, but it isn't appropriate to go outside of the council meeting to do it.
There is a lot of issues that date back before Texas, before this council.
But we were never told any of those things as new council people. You as the mayor did not tell us, there are still lots of things that we have never been told. Am I correct?
Nobody told me when I got on here either, I just sat on for the ride and I've learned as I've gone. I, um...
Nobody asked him to go to the, to Daryl Reeder's Landville and find out whether or not there was an open pit to that house then either. She did that on her own.
I was there, and he asked me about it.
Well, I talked to Daryl Reed myself, I can bring you to the State Council.
I'll go, I'll, I'll agree with Arlen, Erica, Darren told me about the conversation, and he said you told the council, totally different story than what you talked to him about.
Okay. Um, we're going to move on, Douglas. Say something positive, please.
Now, Joe brought my name in this, I don't say no. Dumpster number sixteen is on the ground now. It's being used just like the dump deal the city used to have over there, except by the oil tank, that, you know, we had people going over and dismantling stuff, you know, so right now this dumpster deal's working. I don't know how much longer I can continue it, you know, I'm almost thirty seven hundred dollars into this now, the bill comes out, and dumpsters, so I'd like to keep it going through the fall. Also, my tire program, as of yesterday evening, I had five hundred and twenty eight tires picked up in the City of Stafford. I hope I got everybody, but there's some people that helped me. I had a lot of volunteers offer to help, and sometimes this was just spur of the minute, you know, cooled down the evening, I had to hook up my trailer and go pick up tires. But like, I know I'm a witness to this tonight, I started up on North Minser, when I got the boost house to pick up tires, their kids were going down the street, along the street corners of block, bringing tires back to me, from another father. So I'd like to thank Burke Boost and his children, Robbie Boost rode with me that evening when he picked up tires. Weston and Kylie Moody helped me one day, and of course Paul and Deanna. Bill Elliott helped me many times pick up tires. If nothing else, he's followed me across town after dark to make sure I don't lose anyone, can't see him falling off my trailer. My dad, who was with me yesterday carrying when we picked up your tires, is my dad. And usually we pull it behind my house, where we have the tire stack, my mom, she comes up and helps unload them. Dennis Stein of Sears, they moved Dennis's tires over and some other tires for me, I appreciate that piece of me from handling them. And Sean Bolz and Richard Hernandez, I'd like to thank you guys too. So there's been a lot of people help me do this, and right now, like I said, I have five hundred and twenty eight of them on the ground. If I get some more requests in the next few days, we'll try to get those picked up. I'd also like to thank, because tires that have wheels, it'd cost me more if I disposed of them. But I had Joe McKenna from JB Tires step up, he said he could keep the wheels, he'd dismount tires for me, so we've taken him several, along with Jimmy Brozek and Andrew Blades out of West Broadway. They're going to dismount some for me too, so they can keep the wheels, put junk cars and stuff like that out of the way, so I just wanted to thank them too. I've been approached a couple times by, from the last council meeting, on, how come, well, I think there was a comment made, you know, they thought these intimidated because officers were in here. I was requested to have officers at council meetings by the mayor and the city attorney. So I just want to make that clear right now, that's why there's officers in here. Then I was also asked how come the police department didn't get up and ask for our Robbie people having meetings? We cannot, without direction from the mayor, remove anybody from a public meeting, this public meeting. That's all I have.
Thank you, Doug. Thank you.
I have a couple of letters from the council. The first one is from the staff of Recreation Commission. Staff of Recreation Commission is asking the city council to approve the city crews to use the road grader to level the infield of the baseball field and stretch the edge of the grass line in order to get rid of footage. This is a safety issue as well as a drainage problem. We have purchased sand and topco the infield, and we appreciate if the city council would permit this for quarter to level field. Thank you, Kara. And then I have a letter from the Stafford High School Booster Club. They're asking for the council's support to promote the pride, wanting to know if we want to enroll the city in a membership. Business membership would be twenty dollars.
For a booster club membership?
I received one of those too, Todd, and I probably give them a hundred bucks. Compromised, so I want you guys to just be included in that deal too, if you want to do so.
Does the council have any thoughts? Would you want to be a part of the Booster Club?
I think so. I would.
Sounds good. Is that a motion?
Yes.
Is there a second?
Aye.
Aye.
Austin?
Aye.
Lane?
Aye.
Mike?
What about the work at the ball diamond? Mac, have you looked at that at all? Is there, I guess we could entertain a motion to approve that work if Mac is in agreement to it?
Is there room to get the motor grader in, side fence, ball diamond?
I have a layer, I have about forty, forty foot guy waiting. I think it's possible.
It would be better to have somebody do it with a level.
Level. Do the background here.
It's probably move around a lot better than what the motor grader would, Doug.
Can you check it out and let us know? Okay, thanks. Do business. Richard Foster's here with Main Street.
I appreciate, first of all, that the city council has been behind Stafford Main Street for the last five years. We are officially an America city in the Kansas Department of Commerce and the Main Street Cities. We'll get our award next month along two other awards, and I just want to say thank you for all that, because you just, we furnish all kinds of financial data, we've been very transparent with the city council, and if you weren't aware, there's, I think there's some things that might not have even been here, had five years ago, a group of folks that really care about Stafford, not jumped to the plate and gone up there to Topeka and become a Main Street city. The banners up and down Main Street, the new facade there on Curtis Cafe, we got rid of all the bird's nest, they're up there, and they painted it, it looks really nice. All the signage on the highway, the limestone planter that's down at the south end with the flowers in it. The Main Street is taking care of the forty one planters, watering those and then taking care of all that. The festivals, holiday on Main Street, Hellekenpeek Pig Out, the business promotions, murder mystery that was held last year, We Caught You Shopping began last week, where they go in businesses and catch somebody, in fact, last week it was somebody from Kinsley was in here having supper. The biannual business directory that's put out, and then the business owner appreciates some goodie bags that are given out in the spring. When we think about Stafford Main Street, a lot of things that are exciting about it, our board is Julie Blay, Barbara Grimmett, Dr. Mary Jo Taylor, Dodi Legault's in the back, is one of our board members, and Gene Tucker. Mary Holloway is our executive director, and then several of our volunteers are here tonight, Gary Mengers over here, Myra Morrison is right behind me, Alda Hildebrand, very flying parts of the promotion committee in the Main Street. And so I want you to know that as a Main Street, we are dependent on this, your contribution as a city. Approximately thirty one percent of our budget is city funds. We get no county funds, we do real hard work with auctions, private donations, corporate donations, things like that, and so our budget is thirty one thousand, six hundred dollars for this year. We are required by the Department of Commerce, state of Kansas, to have a director minimum of twenty hours a week. We are required by our memorandum of agreement to have a budget of in excess of thirty thousand dollars. So we're almost at a point, since June thirtieth was normally when the next city contribution would be, we're at the point where I'm asking you as a city council to approve that, or at least really think hard about it, because if we, and I realize, we're not a budgeted item, we're a line item addition, if we are not added in this year, within a couple of months, we will cease to be an organization in Stafford. Stafford Main Street will, will go belly up, we will not be able to do that. So I just wanted to say that, and so I just want to thank you for your consideration on that. Any questions you might have of me as the chair, or the board chair, or the president of Stafford Main Street?
Is there any questions?
I have one. I went to the Main Street thing that we got in the mail in our little book here, and where it shows Stafford Main Street. When you go into its website, it says that it has currently been disabled. You know why? It's been that way for a while.
The, uh...
The Main Street...
The website?
Uh-huh.
I do not know the answer to that. I'll find out.
I was kind of curious why it had been disabled. My other question is, is can you give me an idea of, out of the money that you guys have raised and have been given over the last five years, about how much money have you guys raised?
We've raised, in the whole five years, we have raised a hundred, my guess would be a hundred and five thousand dollars.
Okay. Because the only financials that I've ever received were, I received some operating budget forms that showed that they were, and they were just SIs, and it showed like a hundred and five thousand dollars. And I was just wondering, out of that, whatever, you know, even if it's a hundred and five thousand, what percent of that is actually being spent right here in the community, local community?
One hundred percent. Well, our...
How much is, is it going to be?
It has to go to the national convention, and so my guess is it would be about ninety five percent here, it's all space here. We have some dues that has to go out, but other than Main Street, National Convention, the sister was in Des Moines, and Mary went with the director from Hutchinson, saved us a ton of money. So she's required to go.
That's my question, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions?
There had been a question at one point, this council had wondered if we couldn't have a little more input in the activities, what you guys are planning, and maybe be a little more involved in that type of thing. Is that, am I remembering correctly?
Well, we have four committees, economic restructuring, design, organization, and promotion, and those four committees is part of the national Main Street approach, and those four committees are functioning, some more than others. Definitely would love some input.
And is this a request for another five year commitment, or could we go a year at a time?
That'd be fine. Ongoing would be perfect. The state told us five years ago, when we first went up there, that we were to make a five year commitment, and now they're saying we didn't say that. Well, they did, and we got approved, but you know, it's a moot point. So now we're having to go around the block, so to speak, and say, if we want to continue, this is where we're at.
I've had some reservations about it myself, but when I look at, you know, when I look at the dozens of people that volunteer, and the things that have been done, I don't know that we would be cutting your nose off to spite your face after being involved in five years at this point, so...
So does the state have other requirements after you've been the five years?
We still have to do our reports and do everything, just like we've had in business as usual.
After five, if there was any additional...
No.
After five, if there was any additional commitments?
We're getting an award next month, the Symposium in Independence for the Farmers Market, and for the Murder Mystery, and then for an emeritus city. There'll be three of us at that symposium.
Richard, you said Main Street put up the banners, the signs, stuff, how much of that did they pay for total? I understand the chambers paid half about everything Main Street's done.
Well, they did banners. And then I, and we put them up, and I, and I've heard there's been some discussion about Pride and Main Street and the chamber being one. Uh, I'm on the, I'm active in the chamber, and, and, and when I think about, uh, we, we really do different things than each other, but yet we don't, we don't cross each other over either. So there's just a lot of good working in that, I think that demonstrates that.
But also too, I think it's strange that we put ten thousand dollars a year to Main Street. We don't put nothing to Chamber, we don't put nothing to Pride, they survive on their own. Why can't Main Street do that?
Probably because our budget, I don't believe the Chamber budget is that big.
I don't...
And I know Pride is not.
I know, one time we, I have talked with, talked about it, and we have talked about, uh, things in the city and money, and, you know, where, the city only has X amount of dollars to spend, and where are we gonna spend that? You know, one of the things that we talked about is, the city doesn't really fund the library very well, and, you know, that is something that is a part of the city. And, uh, you know, the, the window, uh, the larynx window is gonna need refurbishment and stuff like that, you know? Maybe we need to look at, uh, what are the priorities that we wanna get done over the next year. That's what I've talked about half the time.
I don't need an answer tonight, and I just wanted to present our case and, and let you know the bare facts there, and thank you for your time.
Thanks, Richard.
Hey, the housing incentive that Claire Moore had brought a couple meetings ago. I, I wanna know what the council thinks about this. He gave us several ideas, one of them was, you know, a thousand dollars incentive for anybody that was in the town. I believe it was no deposits on utilities, that type of thing. Obviously, we don't have to take his recommendations, but I guess I want to know if the council would like for me to check into this and come up with a plan for a housing incentive program in Stafford. I, I just need some direction. Do you guys have any thoughts?
I think it's something that we oughta look into, and then maybe see what other, um, people in the community or other businesses or whatever. 'Cause in one of the parts he was talking about, you know, that different businesses gave some, you know, gift certificates or something like that, to see if that would even add to the, to the pot.
Well, I can't, what size counties kinda compare us to, but I think a thousand dollars is kinda steep. We're all pretty down, maybe we can come down a little bit, but I think we need to just look at it, look into it a little more.
Okay, um...
I do think the, the, I haven't had to make a, you know, a deposit, could be a good thing too, but... Then you kinda gotta look to see, you know, how much to do, or, I mean, I just think we just need to look at a, a lot of that.
And the criteria of what's gonna qualify?
Yeah, we're talking about the end of purchase of a house.
Purchase a house, and we've been for a certain amount of time. We could maybe even throw in school age children in the mix. Just for fun.
Yeah. No, we need, we need us all.
Okay, is, I, I guess that I'd have in the form of a motion, the council's permission to check this out and bring back some examples?
I still move.
Give her a second.
Bronson?
Aye.
Byers?
Aye.
DeVall?
Aye.
Bronson?
Aye.
Lane?
Aye.
Five zero?
Okay, I messed up again, I hope nobody was here for a delinquent hearing for Senator... Sorry. Employee evaluation, Doug, how long do you need?
Five minutes should be good.
Okay, could we have a... Okay, uh, well, I, I would ask for a fifteen-minute executive session with the council, myself, Dawn, Doug, for the first five minutes, and then... For the purpose of, on the length of personnel.
I'll make that motion.
Sure, a second, sorry about that.
A second.
Bronson?
Aye.
DeVall?
Aye.
Byers?
Aye.
Hoffman?
Aye.
Lane?
Aye.
Okay, we're back in session. Uh, regarding the employee evaluation.
I'd like to make a motion that we go with the council's recommendation for Bill Elliott's writ.
Is there a second?
Yes, second.
Bronson?
Aye.
Byers?
Aye.
DeVall?
Aye.
Hoffman?
Aye.
Lane?
Aye.
Five zero?
And is there a motion regarding the second part of the executive session?
I'll move, we start advertising for a new city superintendent?
Second, is there a second?
Second.
Bronson?
Aye.
Byers?
Aye.
DeVall?
Aye.
Hoffman?
Aye.
Lane?
Aye.
Five zero?
For the record, we will be starting the meeting at the Ritz until further notice. So we don't have to go to the city hall and start up and walk over here. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Also move?
Bronson?
Aye.
Byers?
Aye.
DeVall?
Aye.